Madam Chair, I would like to pass a resolution approving the simple bookkeeping and BIR tax compliance for small business seminar on 13th March 2024 by the Department of Trade and Industry Provincial Office in Osami City for first reading with reservation.
For first reading with reservation motion approved.
Thank you Madam Chair, due to its urgency, I would like to pass this for second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request, Honorable Liam is passing this resolution on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment? Remarks hearing none motion approved.
Thank you Honorable Chair. Appounation number 7, a resolution approving the seminar on tax updates on 5 March 2024 by the Bureau of Internal Revenue of San Jose City. On the first reading finals, I accordingly move on joint motion to pass a resolution approving the seminar on tax updates on 5 March 2024 by the Bureau of Internal Revenue of San Jose City for approval on the first reading with reservations Honorable Chair.
Move for first reading with reservation motion approved.
Thank you Honorable Chair, due to the urgency of the public interest to pass the people of the new taxes and this in need of a seminar on this matter, I approve the motion to approve the seminar on tax updates for approval on second and final reading, weaving the internal rules Honorable Chair.
Due to the urgency of this request, Honorable Majority Floor Leader is passing this request resolution approving the seminar on tax updates on March 5, 2024 by the Bureau of Internal Revenue of Osami City in Osami City. Move for its approval on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment? Remarks hearing none motion approved.
Thank you Honorable Chair. Appounation number 8, a resolution approving the 2024 quarterly aquaculture survey on 30th, 28th March 2024 by the PSA Provincial Office of San Jose and now yield to Chairman of the Committee on Fisheries on Aquaculture Honorable John Sakin to introduce an agreement action on this item Honorable Chair.
The Honorable John Sakin is not recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you Honorable Chair. Honorable Chair, I move to pass a resolution on first reading approving the 2024 quarterly aquaculture survey on 13th to 28th March 2024 by PSA Provincial Office in Osami City. The first reading Honorable Chair with reservation.
Approve the first reading with reservation.
Honorable Chair, in this manifestation, I move for the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request resolution, the Honorable Sakin is passing this on the second and final reading as being manifested. Any comment? Remarks hearing none motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you Honorable Chair. Appounation number 9, a resolution approving the 2024 commercial livestock and poultry survey on 15th to 30th March 2024 by the PSA Provincial Office of San Jose City. I again to the Chairman of the Committee on Agriculture, Honorable Sancho Waminal Jr. to introduce an agreement action on this item Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Waminal is not recognized by the Chair.
Thank you again Madam Chair and Majority Floor Leader. This representation would like to pass a resolution approving the 2024 commercial livestock and poultry survey on 15th to 30th March 2024 by PSA Provincial Office in Osami City. Be passed on first reading with reservation Madam Chair on joint motion.
Move by the Honorable Sancho Waminal to pass this request resolution and the first reading with reservation.
Thank you Madam Chair, for the sake of public welfare and given its utmost urgency, may I therefore move that this be approved on second and final reading, weaving the internal rules of this Sanggunean.
Due to the urgency of this request, Honorable Waminal is passing this resolution approving the 2024 commercial livestock and poultry survey on March 15th to 30th, 2024 by the PSA Provincial Office in Osami City. Move for second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment? Remarks hearing none motion approved.
Thank you Honorable Chair. Appounation number 10, a resolution approving the 2024 quarterly crops production survey on 15th to 30th March 2024 by PSA Provincial Office in Osami City. I now yield again to Chairman of the Committee on Agriculture, Honorable Sancho Fernando Waminal Jr., Sancho Waminal Jr. to introduce an agreement action on this item Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Waminal is not recognized by the Chair for the appropriate motion.
Thank you again Madam Chair, Majority Floor Leader. Again, this representation would like to move a resolution approving the 2024 quarterly crops production survey on 15th to 30th March 2024 by PSA Provincial Office in Osami City. Be approved on first reading with reservation Madam Chair on joint motion.
Move on first reading with reservation motion approved.
Thank you Madam Chair. Due to its necessity, may I therefore move that this item be approved on second and final reading, weaving the internal rules of this Sanggunean.
Due to the urgency of this request, Honorable Waminal is passing this resolution approving the 2024 quarterly crops production survey on March 15th to 30th, 2024 by the PSA Provincial Office in Osami City. Move for its approval on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment? Remarks hearing none motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you Honorable Chair. Appounation number 11, a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a contract for the concreting of Ganggo Barangay Road at Porok City, Manlig Road Street by Ganggo Osami City and perform all acts for the implementation of the project funded from the construction and/or rehabilitation or widening of local barangay road bridges, fillways, drainage systems program of 20% development fund of 2024. At this time, may I now yield to Chairman of the Committee on Public Works and Infrastructure, Honorable Salo Salvador to introduce an agreement action on this item Honorable Chair.
The Committee on Public Works and Structure, the Honorable Salvador is not recognized by the Chair.
Thank you Mr. Majority Floor Leader, thank you Madam Chair. I move to pass a resolution authorizing the local chief executive to enter into a contract for the concreting of Ganggo Barangay Road at Porok City, Manlig Road Street, Ganggo Osami City and perform all acts for the implementation of the project funded from the construction and/or rehabilitation or widening of the local barangay roads, bridges, fillways and drainage system program of the 20% development fund of that of year 2024. On first reading with reservation Madam Chair.
On first reading with reservations motion approved.
Due to the urgency and for the interest of the public service, I move to pass this resolution on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Due to the urgency of this request, Honorable Salvador is passing this request resolution on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Any comment? Remarks hearing none motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you Honorable Chair. Appounation number 12, an ordinance granting a grace period for payment of business taxes and fees to cover taxpayers for the 2024 renewal period. Honorable Chair, I move joint motion to approve this ordinance giving a grace period to our business men for the payment of business taxes and fees for the 2024 renewal period for approval on the first reading with reservations Honorable Chair.
May I inquire, when is the grace period? How many days? Granting grace period, how many days is the grace period?
In the application, so this ordinance is ordained Honorable Chair.
You noted your manifestation, Honorable Majority Floor Leader. So you're passing this on the first reading motion approved.
Thank you Honorable Chair, due to the urgency of my public interest to provide alleviation to the resistance being suffered by our business men in the in our efforts to do to establish and introduce the connect BP list or reconnect basement analysis system, I move joint motion to approve this ordinance on second and final reading, weaving the internal rules Honorable Chair.
Manifested by the Honorable Majority Floor Leader to pass this proposed ordinance on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. This ordinance granting a grace period for payment of business taxes and fees to cover taxpayers for the 2024 renewal period. Move on the first read on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you Honorable Chair. Appounation number 13, a resolution approving the fine fund utilization of 30% trust fund shared by city government of Osami in the process collected vampire code fees fiscal year 2018, 2020 and fiscal year 2031 in total amount of 1,520,000 for the procurement of one pickup rescue vehicle for the use of the Bureau of Fire Protection of Osami Station. I move joint motion to approve this resolution for the first reading with reservations Honorable Chair.
Move for first reading with reservation motion approved.
Thank you Honorable Chair, due to the urgent demand of public interest to support our Bureau of Fire Protection Unit in Osami City and to utilize the funds of 20% trust fund shared by city government in the process collected vampire code fees for three years in year 2018, 2020, and 2031, I move joint motion to approve this resolution for second and final reading, weaving the internal rules Honorable Chair.
In manifestation of our strong support to the Bureau of Fire Protection of Osami City Station, the Honorable Majority Floor Leader is passing this resolution approving the fund utilization of the 20% trust fund share of the city government of Osami in the proceeds collected from the code fees and fiscal year 2018, fiscal year 2020, and fiscal year 2023 in the total amount of 1,528,000 pesos for the procurement of one unit pickup rescue vehicle for the use of the Bureau of the Fire Protection of Osami City. Motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Is there any comment? Remarks hearing none motion approved on the second and final reading.
Thank you Honorable Chair. Resolution the last but the least appounation is a resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry Waminal Jr. to enter into and sign on behalf of San Jose City the memorandum of agreement with National Bureau of Investigation for the sit up of NBI clearance center station in Osami City. Honorable Chair, I move joint motion to approve this resolution for the first reading with reservations Honorable Chair.
For first reading with reservations motion approved.
Thank you Honorable Chair. As we know previously, there is an NBI office in Osami City located at GG Shopping Mall but due to some resistance, it transferred and this need would be able to help Osami citizens to this urgent need of public interest on this matter. This urgency to allow our Osami citizens particularly on the request for NBI clearance, they would no longer go to Pagadian City on this matter Honorable Chair. So along this line, I move joint motion to approve this resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry Waminal Jr. to enter into and sign on behalf of San Jose City the memorandum of agreement with National Bureau of Investigation for sit up of NBI clearance station in San Jose for approval on second and final reading, weaving the internal rules Honorable Chair.
In our desire to serve our constituents in securing NBI clearance, we are passing this resolution on the second and final reading. A resolution authorizing the local chief executive, Honorable Henry Waminal Jr. to enter and sign on behalf of Osami City the memorandum of agreement or the MOA with the National Bureau of Investigation in BI for the sit up of NBI clearance center station in Osami City. Move for its approval on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules. Is there any comment? Remarks reactions? Hearing none motion approved on the second and final reading, weaving the internal rules.
Thank you Honorable Chair. There are no pending matters on my table. On item number 10, business for third reading. On this junk tour, may we have the PCL members to hear on the PCL matters from Honorable Dinkiso Honorable Chair.
On the PCL matters, may we hear from the Honorable Swizo.
Thank you very much Madam Chair. This is just to remind that our barackay tree for the PCL we are actually already paying the 19,500 registration fee but the PCL province still waiting for one more member to be paid so that we could be booked on the same hotel. So we need to wait for board member Waminal's payments for the registration fee. And also we will be if there will be no changes on our T-shirts as well as polo shirt for the kids. I am already sending the sizes of all that shirt and I'll be asking also the sizes for Honorable Morales, Honorable Dehlongson, and Honorable Waminal for the kids Madam Chair. That would be all. Thank you.
Thank you Honorable Swizo, noted by the Chair. Your information.
Thank you Honorable Chair. At this junk tour, may we have the PCL members to hear on SK matters from Honorable Jan Phil, Dehlongson Honorable Chair.
On SK matters, Honorable Dehlongson is not recognized by the Chair.
Thank you Majority Floor Leader, Madam Chair. For SK matters, wala kayo importante but I just want to inform this August body and for the record of this Sanggunean. Ong going pagi-hapon karoon ang gihimo ng fidelity band and change signatories sa atuang mga SK chair persons together with their SK treasurer dito sa land bank. Ang problema lang damay nga nganong nalangan ang change signatories. Tungod kayang land bank gi schedule nila ang atuang mga SK na kung kanosan na day sila mag tawag aning change sa signatories Madam Chair. That's all. Thank you.
Thank you Honorable Dehlongson, noted by the Chair.
Thank you Honorable Chair. At this point of time, may we also have the PCL members to hear on ABC matters from our young devonero from Sangay Daco, Honorable Carlo Morales Honorable Chair.
The Honorable Morales is not recognized by the Chair for some ABC matters.
Thank you Majority Floor, thank you Madam Chair. Naalakoy gamay nga ipahibalo kapahin sa schedule sa Vinyo barangay new elected officers. Ang atuang schedule is on March 18th ang atuang kuwan ditoon ang atuang mga barangay atong gi bahin sa Tuloka batch kay dili man maigo sa Vinyo tungo sa kadaghan.
Three batches.
So three batches, yeah.
The first batch would be on.
First batch is on March 18th to 19th and second batch is March 20th to 21st and third batch is March 22nd to 23rd. And ang sulod na barangay sa atong first batch is ang barangay Agwada, Bakulot, Magakay, Kugon, Ni Maluna, Imbarco, Kavente, Kinumanorti, Lamman, Lipusong, Malaubang, Mintiring, Carmen Annex, Pulot, Sangay Daco, Stimson, Obordo, Tabid. Second batch, Banyadero, Baybay San Roque, Baybay Santa Cruz, Kalabayan, Lalapang, Diguan, Gutukandako, Gala, Ganggo, Gutukanjut, Inguna, Kinumansur, Manaka, Mulikay, Pantau, Otrigos, 58th District. And the third batch, Balintawak, Baybay Triunfo, Bungbong, Kapukausi, Kapukaupi, Karangan, Katadman, Doña Consuelo, Gimad, Labinay, Labo, Litapan, Maningkol, San Antonio, Sangay Jut, Sinosa, and Tinago. That's all Madam Chair. Thank you.
I repeat, the venue is at Agwada?
Ah, Ayah Hotel.
Agwada.
Yes, sa Clarin.
Clarin?
Ayah Hotel, Clarin.
Ayah Hotel. Thank you for your vital information, Honorable Morales.
Thank you Madam Chair.
Thank you Honorable Chair. Considering that Honorable Pati On is an official business in Hingao City Honorable Chair, before I proceed to item number 15, may I ask to my colleagues for any important announcement or any valuable material and relevant information they could share this August body Honorable Chair, before I proceed to item number 15.
May I have the floor, Honorable Majority Floor Leader for the other matters? Yes, may I recognize Honorable Swizo and then Honorable Po for the women activities?
Yes, thank you very much Madam Chair. I would just like, I would just inform Madam Chair that the deadline for our SAL end will be this coming February 29th. And then we need to submit the SAL end because this is very, very important as public officials, including our new members of the Sanggunean Madam Chair, that they need to submit it. This is significant especially in the filing of our attachments, including also of our Yes, Madam Chair. So that would be all for the deadline. I think this coming 29th, that's Thursday. And we need to file it prior to 29th. Thank you.
Thank you very much Honorable Swizo for that very important information. At this point in time, I recognize the Honorable Po for some.
Thank you Madam Chair. In addition to the SAL end reminders, believe all public officials or employees are required to file SAL end every year. That is every year. And especially to the newly elected officials, they should file it 30 days after their their official duty. And may I also remind this August body that we have an activity on March 1, this Friday. It would be a fellowship dinner with the business stakeholders with the mayor. So please block your date, your calendar on that day, March 1, 6:30 PM.
Vinyo.
The venue is in Grand Pavilion. Theme is casual, informal. The mayor expects us to be there, to be 100% present on that event. Thank you.
Is there any announcement for the coming March Women's Celebration?
March, yes. There will be a celebration hosted by the CSWD on March 8th but since on March 4th, that would be our first Monday to attend the flag ceremony, it is encouraged that the ladies legislator will also wear the theme color violet.
Pink color?
Violet, the theme color of Women's Month.
Yeah, I received here a communication that on March 1 would be the opening salvo of the Women's Month Celebration at the Asinso Wellness Park.
What time would it be Madam Chair?
2:00 PM.
2:00 PM. So we
March 1.
Yes, we are still attending our flag ceremony. So we might as well
That can be announced.
Yes, wear violet. March, March 4, first flag ceremony, first Monday. Flag ceremony. March 1.
Friday.
March 1, Friday.
Friday. So this is March 1.
So that would be another activity other than the March 8th activity.
Yes, March 8th. Yes, March 8th, March 8.
March 1, March 4, March 8.
Women's Day Celebration, that's March 8th. But the March 1, opening salvo of the Women's Month Celebration that would be at the Asinso Wellness Park, 2:30 PM. 2:30 PM.
And after March 1, Madam Chair, we will proceed, after the opening salvo at Wellness Park, we will proceed and prepare for the evening's affair.
Okay.
Attire is casual. No uniforms, no
Evening affair on March 1?
March 1, Friday.
Ah, mata.
Grand Pavilion.
Grand Pavilion. Okay. Casual attire.
Casual attire, informal.
Okay.
Thank you Madam.
Thank you for your information, Honorable Po, noted by the Chair.
Honorable Chair, relative to the SAL end, may I inquire for Honorable Chair whether there is some urgency because I'm encouraged to file SAL end in October 24th because as far as I recall, the SAL end will be due by last week of March. So is there any kind of urgency why yours, is it a PCL orders that will file before April 24th?
Yes, accordingly, it's usually on or before April 30th or every year after. But there is a provision that the newly members of the Sanggunean needs to file it 30 days upon assumption of their office. So that's why I'm encouraging us, if possible, we could file it and have it prepared on or before the 29th in court in respect to the new members, Madam Chair, Majority Floor Leader. But still, we could have it be on or before April 30th of every year thereafter.
Thank you Honorable Chair. At this point of time, may I give the floor to Honorable Sancho Waminal Jr. for certain important concerns Honorable Chair.
Honorable Waminal is honored to recognize by the Chair for some other matters.
Thank you Madam Chair, Majority Floor Leader. I would like to report to the City Council my recent visit to the Office of City Agriculture, City Veterinary and CSWD yesterday to discuss the high price of pork in the city and other concerns. So Madam Chair, during my visit, we raised several issues and keep up with potential solution to address the concern at hand. So one of the primary issues discussed was the need to engage with the big suppliers of pork in the city.
Kung kulang magotakarne of, uh, ilapong gignon, natulor ba'y dagong supplier drey, Osaka, Chichuan, or Greece. And our scheme to prioritize our city in addressing the demand for pork, which in turn, uh, would help in decreasing the price. It was agreed upon that a meeting be arranged with these suppliers to discuss this matter in detail. In a, again, Madam Chair, they need our help to call these three suppliers. Um, nakanihit magotakarne kay sila gignon pa, do nakonos sila, uh, neighboring provinces, nanginahanap sila hangkwan ba, um, karne po nila. So it was also brought to my attention that the Office of the City Agriculture Council currently has 20 personnel, while the City Veterinary Office has 16. However, it was noted that the Veterinary Office is in need of, uh, three young staff members to serve as a mid-inspector, livestock inspector, and plant keeper. Likewise, CSWD on the other hand is in need of three, uh, registered, um, social workers to be assigned in the making of case studies of their claims. This shortage of personnel may be contributing to the challenges faced in the agriculture and veterinary sectors. And it is, um, important that this is addressed in timely manner. I saw it yesterday, Madam Chair, and, um, I found out that they really need this, uh, personnel. Ikinahan lang nila tulot-tulo. Furthermore, it was decided that, um, quarterly meetings will be conducted to address the other issues and concerns that arise within the three offices. Kay mapunya kong gignon sila ha, uh, dapat by quarter mag-meeting kita para, uh, may bawa na to konse mga problema. Okay, so, um, this will provide a platform for, uh, ongoing dialogue and collaboration to address any challenges that may arise. So, um, I would like to inform you also, Madam Chair, that this presentation, um, will be connecting with the Office of the City Mayor with the help of this, uh, August body so that, um, our proactive mayor is aware of these developments so we can seek, um, his wisdom and support in implementing the proposed solutions and addressing these issues effectively. And I am confident that by taking these, um, steps, we can work towards ensuring a steady supply of pork in the city at a more reasonable price while also addressing the staffing needs of state offices. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Honorable Waminal, of your very vital information. Salamat. Any other matters?
I guess there are no more relevant and material matters to be put by my honorable colleagues, Honorable Chair. I now move to adjourn the conversation, Honorable Chair.